Good evening. My name is Michelle Goodwin and I'm Chancellor's Professor of Law at the University of California, Irvine, and the Director of the Center for Biotechnology and Global Health Policy. It is a pleasure to have you with us this evening as we discuss gun violence and policing in the United States. Gun violence has reached a critical, in fact, crisis point in the United States. We have over 13,000 people a year who die from gun violence. Each week in the United States, there is a toddler who shoots someone. In the United States, a woman is 11 times more likely to die from gun violence than in any other first-world developed country. We see the kinds of statistics with regard to gun violence in the United States that outscore anything that we would see in developing countries. This is a problem that impacts us with law enforcement. It's a problem that impacts us with civilians. And this evening, we have esteemed guests with us who will be in dialogue with us about these issues. We're hosting this town hall meeting from the National Press Club in Washington, DC. And we're going to start this evening looking at the problem within, the problem in the United States. Part of this is our challenge with the failed drug war, which is what Mr. Jack Cole, who's the co-founder of Law Enforcement Against Prohibition, will be talking with us about. We're also joined by the Reverend Dr. Lynda Peoples, who will provide a religious perspective. What are churches doing about these particular issues? And what are the challenges they face when working with their congregations or even working in the local communities about this? Because churches in the United States are being threatened with litigation when they seek to be involved in these issues. And rounding out our panel for the first segment of our town hall is Robert Bennett, who is a longtime civil rights attorney who's been working on issues of police-civilian interaction for decades, and in fact, is working with Judge Glenda Hatchett as they represent Philando Castile's family. As you'll recall, Philando Castile is the young man in Minnesota who was shot and killed while in his car. His girlfriend, Diamond Reynolds, filmed that, and the world over saw that as her daughter was in the backseat of the car. What many of you may remember is how the daughter, who was four years old, was consoling her mother, telling her that, "It's okay, Mommy. You'll be all right," should any child in the United States need to console a parent after a police shooting. So now, let me turn to our panelists. I'd like you to briefly introduce yourself and your work, and then we're going to dive right on in with the questions that I have for you and questions that have come to us.
My name is Jack Cole. I retired a detective lieutenant from a 26-year career in the New Jersey State Police. And for 14 and years of that, I worked undercover in narcotics. When I retired, I felt so bad about my role in implementing the drug war that I sat down with four other police officers and created LEAP, which stands for Law Enforcement Against Prohibition. It's a group that since 2002 has grown into well over 200,000 police, judges, prosecutors, and prison officials who are all calling for the legalization and regulation of all drugs. Legalize them, take them out of the hands of the criminals, and end this terrible gun violence.
And I'm Lynda Olson Peoples. I'm a minister at the Unitarian Universalist Church in Arlington, Virginia. And my title that I've been given, I'm an associate minister there, is Minister of Faith in Action. Because what I try to do is help folks take what's breaking their hearts and what they sense their calling is, and help them figure out how to put that faith into action. And so, we do it both on the individual level, in the congregation, and in partnership with communities interfaith, multiracial, multi-ethnic communities that are all around us in Northern Virginia. And we have been working really hard to understand, for white folks to understand what it means to help end racism, for people who are peace-loving to understand what are the causes for violence, and for people who are concerned about making sure that there is justice in the world. How can we support communities of color, people who have been denied justice, find their way to living a whole life? And that's what is ultimately our faith base, is that every single person is a child of God and deserves to live a whole life. And right now, we are all victims of a spiritual illness that is causing people to move towards hatred, towards divisions and partisan ships, and even towards violence. And it is ruining our lives, our spirits, and our bodies.
Mr. Bennett?
I'm Robert Bennett. I have practiced law for 40 years. I have, I am a trial lawyer, and I do various kinds of trial work. But I've devoted a great deal of my practice towards the representing people who've been victims of excessive force by the police of all types, not just by the use of firearms. But, and we do, we do that kind of work and also prisoners' rights litigation, that sort of thing.
So I want to start off just putting this in context. So, as Mr. Cole has said, after your retirement, you spent nearly three decades in law enforcement. And what I know from you is that your early work was as an undercover, what the high schoolers would call a narc. Isn't that right? And what I understand from you is that you would find a group of young people, and amongst them, there'd be somebody who'd say, "Oh, do we want to get high tonight?" And they would go off someplace, purchase the drugs for kids to use, and then exchange them amongst themselves. But you were then able to be the one to bust those kids, am I right? And turn those kids into criminals?
Yes. Actually, at the beginning of the War on Drugs, Michelle, we really didn't have a drug problem in this country. If you go back and look at the statistics, you'll find that the likelihood of anybody dying here as a result of the drug culture was less than the likelihood of them dying from falling down the steps in their own house or choking to death on their own food at dinner. So we really didn't have a drug problem. We also didn't have a lot of drug dealers. So when I was put out on the street undercover, I was told to make a lot of arrests of drug dealers. And if they weren't out there, what we did was we lied a lot. We arrested a lot of young people doing what we call dipping and dabbing, experimenting with drugs, and labeled them drug dealers.
Now, were these high-income kids or were these kind of low-income kids? Tell us about that situated for us.
These were kids either in high school, or in college, or in between, in work. And as you well said, they're, come Friday night, they're out of work, they're off school, and somebody would say, "You want to get high?" And if nobody said that, that was my job, to make that offer. And of course, if--
Now, let's just hold on that for just a moment. If none of the kids you were targeting, if they didn't want to get high that weekend, your job was to say, "Let's get high"?
Sure. "Anybody want to get high? Let's get high." That's what I was saying.
And what was part two to that? Because it wasn't, "Let's just, you know, get high on life," right? It was, "Get high and some drugs would be needed."
Yes, exactly. And if anybody took me up on that offer, then one of the friends, this would be a small group of 10 to 15 people, one of the friends with access to family car or some other way to get to the city would go off to New York City and buy these tiny little amounts of their drugs for their friends, that their friends had ordered. "Give me two joints," or "Give me a hit of acid, LSD." We're talking $5 worth of drugs. I'd put my order in for this same little $5 worth of drugs because I wanted to look like them. And when they came back, they handed it out to their friends. When they handed it to me, they became a big-time drug dealer. Because that's what we labeled them, and that is what stuck. And I would stay in that group until I had everybody in the group, which was really easy, because these weren't drug dealers. They were, they were young folks accommodating friends. So the person that made the run the first night didn't want to go the next night. They weren't making any money.
But these made, then, the kinds of statistics that your department needed.
Absolutely. Because our administrators had, when Nixon started the War on Drugs, he funded that war with a lot of money for police officers who would be hired to fight his war. And for instance, the New Jersey State Police increased from a seven-man narcotic unit to a 76-person narcotic bureau overnight, all paid for by the federal government. Well, who is going to pay their salary in the coming year unless we could show that the War on Drugs was so necessary?
Well, that's a terrific and stunning point to begin. And it's important to note for our viewing audience just what this means in the United States. And that is, we are only 5% of the world's population, but we incarcerate 25% of the world's population. If we actually had a chart to show you, it would be off-the-chart the number of people that we incarcerate in the United States. And to put this in context, many people think of this as a crime that, or an issue that affects men, mass incarceration. And we're going to get to the point of why this impacts policing. But it's important to know that the US incarcerates more women than any other country in the world. The US incarcerates more women than Russia, China, India, Thailand, and Mexico combined, not just one-for-one, but combined all of those countries in the incarceration of women. And yet, we still exceed that, so much to the point that there are children being raised behind bars. But I want to turn to Bob now, because this connects. And that is, with mass incarceration and the type of policing, and you've mentioned earlier at a congressional briefing that we did, Jack, and that was that with a drug war, then you get people who are fighting it, and those people get their guns, right?
Well, the people who are selling the drugs, they have to have guns in order to protect themselves, because they can't go to a cop and say, "I just got robbed." So everybody gets a gun, as long as the drugs are illegal.
All right. Which would seem to make police afraid. But I want to turn to you, Bob, because for a very long time, you've been working on issues that we're just now beginning to see on camera. I've mentioned before that, you know, because of Apple and because of Samsung, now we bring into our living rooms and on our television screens exactly the kind of police violence against civilians that's on the street. And police do a lot of good, and I want everybody to know that that is the case. But at the same time, what we have seen with Philando Castile, with Tamir Rice, in so many instances, police gunning down unarmed African-Americans. And you've been working on that for a while. Can you tell us what you've been seeing from your work and from your vantage point?
Well, in the early days of the effort to prove those cases, you really had to deal with forensic medical evidence, the luck of a believable, credible eyewitness, and that sort of thing. With the advent of the different types of media that are available, starting with squad cameras, surveillance cameras for businesses, surveillance cameras for cities, officers, before body cameras, we had a showcase today at the congressional briefing where an HD pen camera was used by the officer to film the mechanical asphyxiation of a 29-year-old mentally ill African-American man after a struggle and some tasering on the floor of the YMCA in Minneapolis. But without that sort of evidence, you would, you wouldn't be able to prove those cases. And in that particular case, nor would the medical examiner have been able to find the cause, the manner of death was a homicide, and that the cause was mechanical asphyxiation, because he could see it on the video. So in many respects, the job is a little easier today, although it's hard to believe it even if you see it. I think the--
But you've also mentioned too, Bob, okay, so the job gets a little bit easier, but that's on the civil side. So what you're talking about now is that with cameras, what you can see and what you've shown for us today at a congressional briefing, you showed several videos, and we didn't have enough time to see the full array of ones that you have. But consistently, people had hands up, hands up. And there were one where there was a person who ran, tried to get over a fence, but he turns around and hands up. And there were probably about six officers that beat him up. There is another where it's a passenger in a car, not the person who was driving the car who possibly committed a crime. But we saw out-of-the-window passenger with hands up out of the window. And the officers put a canine in the front seat. And then we see the canine eating up this person in the front seat.
Well, the amazing thing is, you're able to prove up civil cases, which sounds like that's a positive thing. And it is. What's appalling is the distinct lack of the use of the same evidence for, to discipline the officers internally through the police department, or to charge them criminally. Charging officers criminally, there is a subjective component to most crimes that doesn't exist in the civil analysis of the same conduct. But it's, basically, at the briefing, we showed incontrovertible evidence of at least crimes that could be charged, should be disciplined, and would result in a plain verdict on the civil side. But the police have steadfastly refused to use such evidence to discipline the officers in many parts of the country.
Well, I want to turn to this issue about the perverse incentives that go along with this type of policing. And what I mean by that, I want to bring back this issue that you shared with us, Jack, and that is the incentive to expand departments to basically give people jobs. I mean, you got a job, and other people who needed jobs got jobs. But in order to get those jobs, there was something that was exacted by those terrific people, right? People like you, I've known you for a very long time. You're a great guy. But you were exacted into doing something that now, you say that you're ashamed to have done.
Yes. Over 1,000 young people went to prison as a direct result of what I did out there as one undercover agent. A lot of really bad folks went later in the years. But at the beginning of the War on Drugs, as I say, we didn't have a lot of drug dealers. So we made this stuff up. And here's how it became so horrible. Each one of those people I was arresting for distributing a controlled dangerous substance, each one was being sentenced to seven years in prison. I'd come in with--
Seven years? That's a long time.
And that's--
Listen, listen--
Even if they handed me one marijuana cigarette, seven years in prison.
One marijuana cigarette from someone that you met through high school, that you might have even encouraged to get that one marijuana cigarette. Seven years. Now, I want us all to think about this, our audience here and folks at home. Seven years for someone who was a sophomore in high school, or let's say, a senior, that would have been four years going to college, maybe another three years in graduate school. That could have been four years in the military, and perhaps after, what, four years, you maybe get to be an officer, you get some sort of title in the military, right? Four years of gainful employment, and then some extra time on that. Seven years to basically live some dreams, travel the world. But with what you did, it was, and your job, and what you were told to do.
Yes. And those people, about 100 people every two months were being charged like this by just what I did. So in New Jersey, you had to serve one-third of the maximum sentence before you could come out on parole. That meant that two and a half years after each one of these raids that we would have to pick up my people, another 100 people would be hitting the streets out of prison. How are they going to make a living? How are they going to feed their family? We snatched them off the streets at the prime of their life when they were trying to get their education. And even if they had education, who's going to hire them? They were drug dealers. That's what we labeled them. So you know what they do? They turned to the only place they can turn to to be accepted, that's the drug culture. Only now, they really become drug dealers. And for every new real drug dealer, you need a whole bunch of new real drug users. So each one of those people, when they came out of prison, was on the street actively trying to recruit younger people to pick up those drugs and become the next statistic. That is how this became a self-perpetuating, constantly-expanding policy disaster.
That is really stunning. And of course, it also implicates, and both of the narratives that you share, it implicates other people. It implicates supervisors. It implicates the federal government in many ways, because the federal government was funding this.
They paid us.
They paid you--
They paid us extra to do this, by the way.
What do you mean by they paid you extra to do this?
Every state, county, or municipal police department gets a federal grant from the government every year. And that federal grant is based on one thing. How many drug arrests did you make the year before? So the more drug arrests, the more money you get. So we are being paid to make drug arrests. We are not being paid to make arrests of murder or rapists. So where do you think our administrators are going to focus our work, on drug arrests?
And that's the policy implication--
That's right.
--of so much of this. And there's another layer of complicity that's involved with this, too. So, Bob, you informed us about the civil system. And it's amazing when you hear about how much certain cities across the country pay out to people. You know, how a lot of police officers, sadly, because so many do so much good, I think, which is why it's been so hard to have this conversation in the United States, because so many people hear these things, and they say, "I've only known the police to do wonderfully." And yet, there's been a narrative that poor blacks and Latinos have had that's very different. But the other parties that are complicit, you hear in this, happen to be prosecutors, right? Because, you know, if you're able to win on the civil side, and I know you have been, you're successful. But these cases, less than 1%, actually get indicted of police who commit killings.
I'm on his toes here. But the trouble, I have a case right now that will kind of illustrate this point. What my colleague here is saying is, you know, there's a trouble with task forces of all type, because they have a task. You know, they're not searching for a broad array of crimes, they're there to search for one thing. We had 29 people who were charged with child sex trafficking. The District, the US Attorney for the District of Minnesota declined it. The US Attorney for the Middle District of Tennessee took it. And the six, ultimately, there were some trials, there were some acquittals, there were some judgments of acquittal after slight convictions. But the Chief Judge of the Middle District of Tennessee and the Sixth Circuit found that essentially, that this sex child, child sex trafficking task force made up the claims against these 29 people. And they happened to be Somali, who were easily stereotyped, easily vilified. And there's not much worse that they can call you than a child sex trafficker. It was a presumptive detention. People spent between 56 and 18 months essentially in county lockup in Kentucky and Tennessee for no good reason at all. They hadn't been convicted and weren't convicted of anything.
So what you're saying is, is this law enforcement making this up?
Well, it's this task force mentality, you know. You're in this--
That even when--
You're in this big thing, and you're going to make it bigger.
Trying to solve a problem that it just perpetuates. Reverend Peoples, I want to turn to you, because as you hear this all, these are the kinds of issues that I know you have been trying to address within the religious community broadly, and then quite directly within your church. So there is the lens on police violence, and then there's civilian violence. Can you tell us how you've been trying to address that, and also, what kind of pushback you've been experiencing?
Yeah, well, thanks. We've been listening to people on all sides of the arguments and different--
And you've got both sides on this side, right?
Right. But I mean, it's interesting, because we are in Northern Virginia, where a lot of our members are in fact a part of the federal government, and, you know, our healthcare professionals and psychologists and attorneys. And so we're understanding that there's a lot of complexity here. And so we try to help out by, for instance, when we learn that undocumented immigrants are afraid to report crimes to the police, because then they might get deported. We try to help support the cause of undocumented immigrants in our area. When it comes to the state of people that are in prisons, oftentimes, too long of a sentence for a crime that is not really a felony, but they get put in like it's a felony because of the way our laws are written and criminalize certain behaviors. We try to support the families, but also the criminals that are in the system. And we also try to figure out, where can we leverage changes in policies? In our own local neighborhood in Northern Virginia, a gun shop set up in a residential community with houses all around and a daycare center next door. And the neighbors that lived there said, "Well, we don't want this in our neighborhood." They didn't want to say, "No gun shops at all," but they just said, "We don't want that in our neighborhood with all these children around and our families here." And not only were they met at every meeting with, all I can characterize it as, big white guys with big guns. I mean, they were gun-toting guys to intimidate these soccer moms, you know. But when we actually had a prayer vigil in a public park, a couple of blocks from the shop, those of us who were there, we were dragged into court, we were being sued by the gun shop for impeding their business.
So let's just thought that, so you're saying--
I was praying--
You were praying--
For peace.
You were praying for peace, and you're being sued.
I'm being sued, yeah.
Wait, you were praying for peace--
Yeah.
--and you're being sued by big gun-toting people or gun shop?
Well, the gun shop is suing us. When we went to meetings in county buildings, public buildings, a place like this except open to the public, can you imagine us being sitting here, you know--
Okay, this isn't a government building, though.
Sixteen moms, sixteen moms and their minister, and then 40 guys walk in, big guys, with their guns. And they weren't stopped at the door.
This would be the Second Amendment solution to freedom to practice religion.
Right. So anyway, so we're trying to be in solidarity with our neighbors, with undocumented immigrants. We are working on matters of race, because it's, ever since the smartphone makes it possible for people to really see that in fact, people really will go after an unarmed African-American man or a woman, it's clear to us that race connected with this, whatever this insanity is that causes people to hate each other, xenophobia, when you match those two things up, there's a real mental, spiritual crisis. And I was telling my colleagues before we met here, our senior minister is on his way to North Dakota to stand with a group of, an interfaith group of clergy that are going, there's going to be 300 or 400 of them there, because they want to protect the Native Americans who are protesting for their rights of their sacred lands, not to be endangered by the pipeline. They're being threatened. And meanwhile, a group of white guys with guns who held hostage a park in Oregon--
And vandalized it.
Vandalized it and threatened the workers there.
Many people actually don't know that part.
They got, right. They vandalized it, they threatened the workers so that nobody would--
They threatened government officials withholding AK-47s.
But so it seems as though you can carry, a white guy carrying a gun can get let off by the jury in Oregon, whereas these Native Americans in North Dakota are being threatened. And so that's why we're sending a bunch of clergy to go stand witness and--
You know, I think that many people, Reverend Peoples, actually, sitting at home and watching this, and watching this at their universities, as my students are back in California, would really be shocked, or probably shocked right now, to hear this. To hear about moms being threatened by folks with big guns when they simply want to pray for peace and equality and social justice, it really is stunning.
It's stunning.
So how do we get past this? And I want to put just a pinpoint in there, because, Jack, you mentioned that after those kids, that you would round up and arrest after some of them wanting the drugs, sometimes with you suggesting that they should buy the drugs. Many of them probably got sentenced, probably a number of them over the years ended up just taking plea deals, I'd imagine.
Almost all of them.
Almost all of them, because that's really what happens a lot.
Probably 98% of them, at least.
98%, because that's what's happening in the United States. We're not seeing a whole lot of cases going to trial. There's a lot of pressure to plea. But this means a criminal record. And I think what a lot of people, you know, it's difficult to process that with a criminal record, you can't even volunteer. With a criminal record in a number of states, you can't even become a licensed barber. There are so many jobs that you're kept from doing because you've had that experience. So can we imagine a 16-year-old or a 17-- So, can we imagine a 16-year-old or a 17-year-old that you arrested, who's now been gone off to jail and has a record, but can't even come out and do a job that we would say would be, you know, a job to take care of him or herself by being a barber? I do want to let you all know that the ACLU is actually working on this and I am on the Executive Committee of the ACLU. And an advisory committee, the Trone Advisory Committee, which is looking to advise the ACLU and also the government about reentry. Because another important piece of this, and then I want to hear from you, Reverend Peoples, is that what do we do when people get out? I mean, the number of people that we've arrested and that two-thirds of whom are nonviolent offenders in the United States, when they get out, they can't get jobs. What do they do after reentry? And for a lot of them, even an education is a barrier because college and law school applications ask, "Have you ever been arrested?" It certainly is asked if you go to law school and you want to become a member of the bar on your character and fitness. So, Reverend Peoples, you are nodding your head about this. Is this something that your church has taken up?
Yes, it's something that's concerning to us a lot because we have to both help the families and then the people that are returning citizens get some respect, get some sense that they can get jobs. And right now in Virginia, the Governor McAuliffe is trying to make sure they can vote. And, but also, while we're trying to do that, we understand, and I'm so glad to hear about the ACLU, and we've worked with legal aid justice, legal justice aid in Virginia, to try to look at the more systemic part of it too, is how can we help so that this, people don't keep getting put in jail for these long terms and then have this record on them? Because it does, it ruins families, it ruins communities.
Well, it's amazing, as I've been looking at these issues impacting women's lives, some years ago, I was doing research in the Philippines, field research, and that field research was actually about sex trafficking of girls. But I came to know women who were organizing and working to prevent that. And one of the women that I met was someone who had been incarcerated for being a political dissident, that she was working towards equality in her country. And the way in which she was punished was to have her children behind bars with her. So, this idea that to really punish her, we'll make sure your kids are in jail. But I'm wondering whether or not you all have worked with cases that now involve women having their babies behind bars here in the United States. I mean, in the United States, we now see that as progress. We've arrested so many women that rather than punishment, we actually see it as a benefit. Now, your baby is behind bars. And that, to me, is stunning and striking if that's thought of as progress.
It's not progress and it's, yeah, I don't know what else to say. It's not progress and working with families and understanding the impact on them. And I know we work with schools too to try to help the families that have been damaged, you know, try to give some sense of support to them all. But it is not progress. And the fact that children are being sent to prison, charged as adults when they're still maybe 14 or 15, Virginia has a shameful record of, we call it the school-to-prison pipeline, that oftentimes, school security officers, once again, not to malign them, but many of them are enforcing misbehavior as if it were a crime, instead of trying to support and counsel these young people that are getting themselves into trouble and helping them mature into.
Well, that raises some real issues too about the ways in which police then happen to be utilized. Because we've been researching through our task force at the University of California Irvine, we've been researching the school-to-prison pipeline and particularly its impact with regard to girls. And it's absolutely stunning, the data that we've been finding, so that it is multiplied if you happen to be a student with a learning disability. The fact that the school will just simply call law enforcement. We've seen instances in California with five-year-olds being arrested without their parents being called and with their hands being zip-tied behind them because the handcuffs are too large and their ankles also being zip-tied, as in shackling. There have been cases just in the last year in Tennessee and other states involving six and seven-year-old kids. Just in Chicago, actually, last year, there was a little girl who was seemingly arrested in school because the security guard thought that she had stolen a piece of candy that her mother had included in her lunchbox. And she was left alone behind a stairwell, handcuffed. I mean, that's, what do you do with instances like that? Bob, I want to turn to you because I want to pick up on this question about complicity. One of the things that I have seen in the videos that you show is that it's not just one officer who gets involved in something that he or she shouldn't be involved in, as in harming someone who is trying to surrender, violating the protocol of the department. What you see are multiple people involved. So, when you are involved on the litigation side of it, is it multiple officers who end up in that process or is it just one? And do those officers end up keeping their jobs?
The officers almost uniformly end up keeping their jobs.
So, in the kind of cases that we saw today, those officers keep their jobs after they're shooting gun people now?
You didn't see anybody today that lost their job.
And I'm telling you, we saw several videos that probably involved at least 30 officers physically harming, shooting, doing other things to people and they all kept their jobs?
I mean, and really, one of the main problems is that the police are terrible at policing the police. I mean, lawyers, of course, they say we need our young, but we will discipline and get rid of lawyers who are causing problems, who give us a bad name and, or deal with them if they have substance abuse problems, there's programs for that. But the police obdurtly refuse to discipline themselves. And they, we say all the time that there's these good officers. Well, there's these good officers that don't do anything about the bad officers, so how good are they is the question that needs to be asked. I mean, if you'll let that, you know, we get back to Edmund Burke, the only thing we need for evil to try and, is for good men to do nothing.
And that's an issue for people of faith because oftentimes, we're on the school boards and we're on the, you know, the places where we see what's going on. We're just a few miles away from where a young African-American woman, Natasha McKenna, who was mentally ill and was in a detention center, was aggressively and forcibly tasered to death by five large police officers. And this, she was a small woman. And it was all caught on videotape, it was shown over and over and over again. And it took us still a couple of years of citizens speaking out to say, "We can't have this happen anymore." But I'm still very scared that even in the suburbs of Virginia, people are going to just let it be. And so, I appreciate you saying that, that there are wonderful, good people out there, but we can't stay silent. And that's a crisis of faith for anybody who believes in the value of human life.
A lot of the things that Bob is speaking of, when I was in the state police, it was referred to as street justice. Because you got to remember, our police officers today are trained to go to war. And when you're trained to go to war, that's not a policing job, that's a job of a soldier. And it sets up a whole different dynamic. And when you're trained to go to war, your job is to win that war regardless of what you have to do to win it. So, many of our police officers feel like if what they have to do to imprison a guy that they know was out on the street dealing, but when they stopped him, he didn't have any drugs on him, well, we'll just put a little drugs on him. Or if they drop it in the street, we'll say, "Well, he didn't drop it in the street, he had it on him." They lie on the stand and they do this because they're trained to go to war. It's a terrible metaphor for policing in a democratic society and it really ruins police forces. And this street justice? When we started this war on drugs, when we would serve, search warrants on these people's houses, you wouldn't search the thing like reaching a drawer and raise something up and look at it. You'd pull out the drawer and dump everything in the middle of the floor and dishes and things broken and pour honey on the clothes and ketchup and that was street justice. And when we left, we'd leave this door dangling off an apartment, you know, because we'd crushed the door open. If we arrested everybody in the place because we found some drugs in there, we'd go out and we'd just leave this door hanging and figure, "Well, if somebody goes in and robs them, that's street justice." If enough bad things happen to them, they'll know better and use drugs next time.
So, what I'm thinking here, and I wonder if people at home are thinking, that you're an outlier or that you're just simply disloyal. I mean, you're painting a picture that is really chilling, that is deeply chilling. And I think it would be, I think it's probably very hard for people to understand because it's a world that's very far apart from what they'd like to believe.
It's our training, it's our training. And we're also, things that cops don't talk about, we're trained to fear, especially black men. We are literally trained to fear them. And we're trained to fear anybody that we stop. When you go through the academy, it's drummed in your head every day, every day. You're told, "Every time you stop a car, there's a chance that somebody in that car, some occupant in that car will kill you." Well, in a way, that's true. But it's also true that every time a car is stopped by a police officer, there's a chance that somebody in that car is going to be killed by the police officer. But we don't go out and tell that to everybody that's getting a driver's license. Because there's no sense in trying to frighten people. The thing, you're supposed to educate people and train them, not frighten them, you know? Not scare them to death so that when a young recruit gets out on the street and stops a car, they overreact because they're afraid.
Do you know, well, it makes you wonder about the Philando Castile case.
That's exactly what happened in that case.
Because as Diamond Reynolds is taping that, and it's stunning, the whole world over, I was just with a psychiatrist last night who was telling me that, you know, she said, "Well, you know, it's hard to believe that those folks are okay, they seem so calm." She was referring to Diamond, like, "Why was she, you know, so calm in doing that?" So, it raises questions just about, you know, there's one way in which the police are kind of fearful and I'd imagine that there's a whole lot of trauma that black folk experience in fear. But there's also the training of, "Hands up, be real still, don't aggravate." And yet, even so, we see what happens. Bob, you wanted to chime in with that.
I deal with a number of national police experts, most of whom testify for the police. And only when I present them with a case that I believe is meritable, they testify against the police. But the expert I've talked to said that, and he does training throughout the country, is that the officers are, there's a whole set of training now, like the one received by the officer who shot Philando Castile, Philando Castile, that one's called Bulletproof Warrior. So, there they do a bunch of shoot, no-shoot training to scenarios that invariably have you shoot. So, and with the fundamental principle being that no matter what, you end the night in your favor, which I don't have a, you know, ultimately, you want that to be a case, but you want to let the evidence unfold, let the actions unfold, rather than be worried about the world of infinite possibilities, which is what they sort of train to these days. And they're getting criticism for those kinds of training. I think that was Caliber that offered that. But it was supported by the St. Paul Police Department and I've had discussions, I said, "That, you may want to rethink that." And I think they are. I think they've overtrained and oversensitized the officers to the need to shoot. And officers prone to panic, get that disease worse.
You know, as we begin to bring this panel to the point of Q and A and to wrap up for our second panel, it also brings to mind, you know, there are times in which officers are disciplined or they, let's say, move, "Jack, you're looking at me with this incredulity, like, you know." But my understanding is that there are officers who are encouraged to leave a particular department, but the part two of that is that they end up elsewhere.
Everybody else.
Right. You know, such as in the Tamir Rice case, there was an officer who had been at another department and had been let go for some very aggressive types of behavior, but then found himself, you know, and the Tamir Rice case, I have to say, when I saw that video, I thought it was on fast forward. I had to watch it four or five times because it just seemed so absolutely quick that this young man was killed.
The officer who taught that police officer firearms in the first police department he was hired by said, "This man should never have a gun."
And yet, he ended up in Cleveland and shot Tamir. You know, one of the issues that we didn't talk about, but you actually raised and your videos raised too, Bob, and we're going to open up to our audience here, is that it's not always just shooting. In one of the instances, there was a man who was tasered over and over again and then officers sat on him or kneeled on him?
They straddled his buttock, one of them straddled his buttocks, the other one knelt with one or two knees between his scapulas for a period of four and a half minutes and mechanically asphyxiated him.
Right. So, it's not, I mean, guns are involved often or that's what we have seen on videos, but it's not always, it's not always guns.
It's not always guns, no.
Right. That actually, yes.
Could I say something else about this fear thing? Something has changed. I was in 26 years and when I was in, I came out in 1991. But when I was a police officer, I never, ever heard any other officer say, "My number one job is to get home safe at night." And I think those of us that I knew well, if somebody ever would have come up to us and said that, we probably would have said, "That's a really cowardly statement, you know? You raised your right hand and you swore to protect and serve the community. If that means you're not going to get home safe at night, that's what you signed up for. And if you're so fearful about your job that you're not going to get home safe at night, that you might act too fast and accidentally kill somebody that you didn't intend to, you should find another job. You should be an accountant or a banker or any of the thousands of other jobs that don't require you to put your life on the line, but not a police officer. It just drives me nuts when cops say that."
It seems that there's a real intersection between the proliferation of guns on the street and also what officers are confronted with doing and the pressure that's put on them to make quota with stops and whatnot. I want to take an opportunity, if there are audience questions, yes, and I will repeat those questions, yes.
I work with a lot of the families basically across the country. I work with Tamir Rice's family, Andrew Joseph's family. And then in Chicago, we have so many cases that are not high profile. So, it's like a lot of the families go from attorney to attorney or they can't get anyone to take their case. So, what are some things they can do to kind of like, get the process going to like seek justice for their kids?
And I'll repeat that question for our viewing and listening audience. The question is, with so many individuals who have suffered the plight of gun violence in their family by police and by others, when, by police, it's very difficult to get lawyers to take on those cases. And so, Bob, do you want to address that? We've actually talked about that in class, you've visited my class before.
Well, we have. Some cases are very hard to prove. If you have the kind of video that you saw at noon, it's not, it's not as difficult. If you have forensic medical evidence that disproves and makes a lie out of the police reports, if you have credible eyewitnesses to help you, but if you don't have that and if you have people that, there are people's rights who are harder to prosecute successfully. People, you know, chronic inebriates, the severe and persistently mentally ill, people who have a long felony background. And it doesn't seem like it's fair that that be the case, but it is a fact. Juries won't have, don't come out with positive outcomes. You have to have some evidence. If you have that, if you have a person who's a hard person for people to believe, you have to have evidence that will make them believable. But there are certainly good attorneys in Chicago and the, although. But there are certainly good attorneys in Chicago, and the, although, there, there not many of them, I, I remember they were, they were talking on CNN about this, and they said, well, can't, can't these cases by the, be handled by the civil justice system? And Garagos, who I don't agree with more than half the time, says, well, there aren't two dozen lawyers in the, in the United States that actually make a living prosecuting the police, and he's probably right. It's, it, you know, it's a very difficult, it's a very difficult thing to do, you have to, and you, and you have to pick the right cases, because if you don't, and if it appears like you're, we're crying wolf, that doesn't help either. We have to win these cases, so that they have to look the judgment in the eye, they have to look at the finding of the jury, and see, and see it for what it is. Then they have to change policy, and frankly, the large awards make them change their way of thinking. They, they, they don't have, you know, they don't like paying out six, seven million dollars at a club.
So, but, but this makes me think, and we've got another couple of audience questions here, is that access to justice, then, is incredibly limited. Because just as you've said, you know, you want the video evidence, you need that which is so compelling, that they'll either settle before going to court, or where a jury will see it and have to say, something was wrong. But it makes me think about Rodney King. We all remember that first video, and the officers were acquitted, though we see how many officers beating and kicking a person who was down. And, you know, how shocking, I want to get to this question that we have. Can you state your name, please, and I'll repeat your question?
Yeah, my name is Anna Broaden, I'm a lieutenant for the Middle South at Howard University. And I have a question that relates to what you've suggested, as well as how police carefully police other police. And how does that concept then connect, or does the ability further into the concept of justified homicide? Is there anything more that police are doing that can cover up a lot of these murders and homicides that we see in the U.S.A.?
Okay. So, let me repeat the question for our audience. So, the, so the question is really about police covering up for other officers, and how is it that we address that particular issue? What do they call that, the code blue?
Blue wall.
The blue wall, okay, all right. Bob?
Well, the, what I would say about it is that, you know, you will, you will see, you will see the absence of things in reports that would help you. You will see reports that look amazingly similar. And you, I mean, I've, I've seen, you know, we live in a era, in some sort of strange time now, where the truth isn't the truth, and the facts aren't the facts. And they can look at the videotape and, and say, I don't see anything wrong with that. You know, when every, all of us are going, really? You know, so, it depends, I guess if you could deny any fact and have certain people believe it. On the videotape that we showed with the, the shooting of the hostage, 10 officers didn't shoot the hostage, one officer shot the woman hostage. The BCA who was investigating says, well, that's just a two-dimensional image, and, you know, it's just a series of still photographs, and it doesn't really capture what the officer's perceived, because he doesn't, you can't hook up feelings to the film. First of all, that's not part of the test, the feelings. Second of all, if they were trying to convict me of it, they'd use it. They wouldn't, they wouldn't have any second thoughts about it at all. So, it all depend, I mean, you have, you have an investigatory body that wants, that's looking for a result, not the true result, not the just result. And we have to change that, or none of us are getting justice.
Yes.
But it's not just the police that are, are doing this, that are covering up this stuff. Someone helped me with the name of the man, I'm blocking on his name, the young man, the young black man in Chicago that was shot down on the street 16 times.
LeQuan McDonald.
LeQuan McDonald.
LeQuan McDonald.
Thank you, audience.
When that, when that occurred, there was video made of that, exactly what happened. You saw the whole thing, only we didn't get to see it. We didn't get to see it because not only would the police department not release the videos, but the mayor of Chicago wouldn't allow the videos to be released.
And in fact, the mayor of Chicago...
He was running for, for office, and didn't want it to come out.
There was, there was $5 million, a check for $5 million that was written to the family of the mayor, saying that you didn't know.
Without them even going to court.
Without even going to court.
That's right. And, and, and the, the leader of the police union came on, out to the news and said, yes, this young black man was shot down because he had a knife, and he was threatening the officers, and he was shot in the chest. And that was the end of it. That was all we knew about this thing, until the investigation finally comes out of it about a year later, and we find out, he was shot 16 times by one officer, eight times after he was laying on the ground. The knife he had was a three-and-a-half inch blade, and he was walking away from the officers was when he was shot.
But control...
This, yes, it's, stuff is just buried.
Control of the narrative, and control of the information are what, are tools in, in what the questioner was talking about.
Accountability, that's what is required. And, and one thing that's helping this accountability is Black Lives Matter organization. That, that is making a big difference in police accountability.
And that's amazing that you should say that. I mean, I wonder what, you have, what's interesting is that I know you have so many friends, you have got drug czars, former drug czars, so many detectives and others that have supported you and your organization, and yet, at the same time, you sound like such an outlier. But I know that there are people who actually agree with you. I want to thank you all, as panelists, with getting us started, with identifying the problem within. There is much more for us to think about and to address on these particular issues. We have cut into the surface, if you will, of this. We have another panel that will follow up with us after a brief break. But I want to thank you all, because this is so important, what you do, and bringing this information to our broader American public. And thank you.
Thank you.
We are going to take a brief break and be back in three minutes. Thank you.